After four o'clock, we'll resume the board meeting and resume the workshop that we had earlier today, this morning with Assistant CEO Alan Flora, Auditor Controller Lloyd Weir, and Deputy County CEO Jill Martin.
Well, thank you Chair Jirdy, members of the board. So this is where we were when we finished this morning, or around noon time. So I think we went in a few different directions from this slide, but I guess maybe we'll just go ahead and go through some of the other slides that I have prepared and see where that takes us, and then we can do a wrap-up. Just wanted to talk a little bit, because I don't think we can talk about this too often, the importance of having a structurally balanced budget. I know your board is very familiar with this, but ensuring that ongoing revenues are utilized for ongoing expenses and one-time revenues or fund balances utilized only for one-time expenses. Reserves and contingencies are something that are not used for ongoing expenses, and that's why we utilize one-time revenue or fund balance for building those as well. And I think it's important to note that the board's commitment to having a structurally balanced budget has been key to the fiscal stability and the recovery in the county's finances that we've seen over the last several years. And I think you might have seen this chart before, but taking a look at the fund balance in the County General Fund back to '05-'06, and you can see that some very difficult times here, particularly '09-'10 with a negative $3.4 million fund balance, and this is definitely not a position that we want to be in again. And you can see the growth that we've seen over the last few years, but to give it a little bit of context, you can see in the orange below the line there, the percentage of general fund appropriations that that equals. So even at 11.7 million, which has been, you know, at the end of '14-'15, beginning of this year, still a little under 6.5 percent of general fund appropriations. One of the things, we talked a little bit earlier about this and about the board's setting priorities. So with the way we'll be doing the budget process and adopting the budget in June, similar to the board approving a recommended budget, is we don't know what the final fund balance numbers are going to be. And we will come back later and make adjustments, but I think it would be helpful if the board had any desired priorities on what the use of those one-time funds would go for. So since it's one-time, we wouldn't be using that to cover salaries and benefits, although it is used for some of the one-time payments that have been made to employees. There are generally a number of department requests that come in that we can fund with one-time money. For example, some contracts that are not ongoing, limited-term extra-help positions, equipment expenses, that type of thing. And so we would generally dedicate one-time funding for those expenses, which would free up ongoing revenue that may need to be dedicated to costs as a result of labor Other things, of course, infrastructure and capital improvements. We put quite a bit of one-time funding into the CIP in this fiscal year, and that's really important. You know, we haven't invested a lot over the last several years in our infrastructure, and it's necessary to really make some improvements there. And of course, in the infrastructure, I would include roads in that, too. Made in some additional payments. I know we talked quite a bit this morning about roads and that being a priority. Other special projects your board may be interested in, as I mentioned, reserve adjustments or other, what I would term "community investments," which a variety of those came up this morning, whether it's roads, homelessness, economic development issues such as broadband housing, et cetera. So just kind of wanting, you know, another opportunity for feedback from the board on these issues, what perhaps priorities you would like to have for spending that one-time money. And, you know, there's a number of different ways this can be done. We could, we will likely use our third-quarter projections for fund balance to build the budget that's adopted by the board in June, which I think, you know, should be a safe bet for us. And then, you know, oftentimes, there's additional fund balance by the time the year comes in. We could just wait, and the board can make a decision about allocating that funding when we come back in first quarter, later in October. Or we could set some priorities. Some counties authorize the auditor to put it in a certain place until the board wants to make a decision about that. Some counties just leave it in their fund balance carryover for a decision at a later time. So just wanted to have a conversation with the board about how they felt about some of those things.
So one thought I've had is, one thing we could do is, and maybe this is what you're saying, is we could say, okay, the first $2 million would go towards this, and then if there turned out to be more than that, it would go towards this next project or then that project, sort of down a list.
Right.
We could do that. And the thing that I keep thinking of is the fact that, you know, the bad news that we've heard is that because one of the three funding sources, one of the three taxes that's on gasoline is, has been dropped because it was in replace of a sales tax, and some of that money does go to the county. And so that's, the drop in the price of gas has resulted in a drop of that revenue, and so it's dropped the county's revenue for the Department of Transportation by $1.7 million over a two-year period. So on the one hand, we're making all this effort to put money into the DOT budget and get a $2 million a year line item for paving, and over two years, it's lost almost $2 million in its normal funding stream. And so, you know, I'm really concerned that we have a bigger gap to fill this year, because no one's, no one I've seen anticipating that gas prices are going to go up much above where they are right now. So anyway, so I'm just really concerned about that, and I don't want to see us lose ground from the little bit of ground we've made. And we all know that we need to be spending $7 million a year just to maintain the roads at their current sad condition, and we're spending, at this point, $2 million a year paving those roads. You know, what, $11 million altogether on the road department, but about $2 million is actually paving. And so I would put a priority of putting as much as we can into that road budget to at least maintain that $2 million a year paving line item. And part of my reason for that also is I feel like we have invested very significantly in the last couple of years, playing catch-up on the deferred maintenance of the buildings and computers. And at this point, I'm not, I realize our computers may be better than the average county computer, so we may have a skewed view, but I feel like the computer I use here at the office is by far better than any computer I used in Fort Bragg City Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would support anything for roads. In my district, that's what I get the most calls about, and DOT is very concerned about the weather and what it's going to do to our roads. So far, we've had some gaps between the reins, but they're very vulnerable, and people are sick of their roads. And some people just tell me, you know, it's never been this bad. They always love to say that, but threaten to move away, and it's just an ongoing source of frustration. I was wondering if I could cheat and go back to something that I missed before. In your earlier presentation, you talked about a change just locally for us, that you weren't real clear on why it happened. It wasn't affecting the counties around us, but just us. Do you recall? I think it was from the red charters. Is that going back too far?
Yeah, it's related to, well, really related to the labor force. Yeah, we're seeing a downtick in unemployment, or an uptick in unemployment rate and a drop in labor force participation. But also, the change that we're seeing in the real estate market related to values seems to be unique to Mendocino County.
Interesting.
I mean, everything's kind of leveling off a little bit, but the recent decline we saw, I cannot find in a neighboring county or the north.
Interesting, because we're hearing some from Humboldt that their values are skyrocketing on different cannabis future big sales, and we're having some intense pressure, too. So it's funny, it's not showing more, but I'll keep looking at that. Thank you.
When we talk about one-time funding, capital improvements, and I do agree with Supervisor Jirdy about the roads, because they're fastly, we're losing ground in keeping them up. But we also had discussions earlier, and we talked about, when you talk about one-time funding for economic development and doing another program through our planning department. I think we talked about, or I believe it was the CEO finally came back, 50,000 was put towards that. And that might be something we want to look at with one-time funding as well, because I think, you know, it'll pay back dividends as we move into the future. And then also, I know with one-time funding, there's nothing we could do to help some of these departments, emergency services, but maybe there is on some type of equipment. Much like we did when we did this grant process previously this year, there might be something that we want to do again and have it directed towards emergency services, fire departments. So that's my input, but I want everyone to realize, we're going to be going to the next page. We also have the pension gap reserve that we need to look at as we move into the future. So that's my input.
Supervisor McCown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And please refresh me again on what the total would be of the projected fund balance. Please refresh me on what the total would be of the projected fund balance carryover plus the amount of contingency that was set aside for contracts that is unlikely to be used for that purpose since it was covered within the departmental budgets. Are we up around $4 million?
We'd be getting pretty close, yeah, right around $4 million.
Okay. So, you know, we keep calling it one-time funding, and yet we generally have a fund balance carryover, and since, I guess, since '09-'10, it's been very significant. In some years, we are, I think our direction was, and the recommendation of the executive office was to try and bring that down and bring our ending fund balance more in line, or rather, bring our adopted budget more in line with what our ending balance is going to be. And yet, it seems to me that it's foreseeable, we're always going to have a fund balance at the end. So we've tried to pare it down to not have a higher-than-necessary year-end carryover, and we still have $4 million. Although you can call it one-time funding, it seems to reoccur on an annual basis. So maybe we could start talking about if we do have, you know, I mean, I think we could carve out $2 million, and we could just assume we're probably going to have $2 million on an ongoing basis. And the CEO is shaking her head, but we haven't gotten there yet. And it derives from the fact that we approve X number of positions, and then we're not able to fill them. And I'm willing to believe that that's primarily simply because the public employee hiring process is so cumbersome, so that by the time you've gone through the process and you've hired someone, someone else has left, and now you're having to recruit from them, we're never fully staffed. So, you know, I would be open to the idea of looking at using some portion of this fund balance and dedicate it to roads, or dedicate it, for instance, we have money that we set in contingency for employee contracts. We know we're going to be renegotiating contracts in 2017. Maybe now is the time to start putting aside some money for that purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My comment is that, you know, we refer this to as one-time money, because the direction of this board for the last few years has been that we would not use one-time money for operational expenses. And you're right, we have had a fund balance for the last few years, we know. My only concern, and clearly I know, it's the board, you're making the decisions. Before we landed up in our major economic downturn, this board, when there was a fund balance, every year would spend that money. And if you recall, that was the end of the year, it was the fund balance, and if it was $50,000 or $500,000, that was all spent. None of it was, none of it was put in any type of savings contingency reserve. So excuse my anxiety, but I do have it, because I'm not convinced that over the next two years, we're not going to run into a financial problem. And I say that because you do have labor contracts coming up with all aid bargaining. And, I mean, we just spent two hours in here with fire, and we know the urgency there, and tomorrow we're going to be talking about mental health. So if everybody gets some of that pie, there's no pie left. And I just don't want to see this board in a position where you're going to land up in a deficit. And, you know, so not to, I understand what you're saying, Supervisor McCown, and I agree. If, I guess what I would rather see is not a commitment on the fund balance, because while it may not be one-time, it is unpredictable and really should not be used for operational expenses. So you know what the fund balance is every year. You can make those decisions. You could, you know, make your priorities, and we can follow them. But to plan on spending that money, I think, is somewhat dangerous. So thank you for listening.
Supervisor Brown?
Thank you. And I also get anxiety, because I believe that they used one-time funding to implement a slaven study. And I mean, I look back, several instances with previous boards, that they committed funds that they really didn't apply to the future. So whether it was safety pay, you know, so much should have gone into retirement based on that. That wasn't done. But I, you know, so I do believe we have to be really careful how we go forward.
Oh, go ahead.
One more comment on staffing. I also agree with Supervisor McCown in that I think one of the reasons why we have a robust fund balance at the end of the year is because of staffing. I do think, though, that we have made some significant changes, and we continue to do so. You know, it hasn't been quite a year that we now have an all-civil-service system. We no longer have merit system. So Human Resources is doing that hiring. We know that we now have the ability for people to apply for jobs online. There's good and bad with all of that. The other effort we're looking at is a consolidation with, an additional consolidation with Human Resources and staff resources in the agency. All of that for the purposes of trying to expedite hiring. So, you know, it's a catch-22. We have this fund balance because of slow hiring, so this board has pushed and pushed and pushed that we expedite our hiring. We're trying to do that. So as we do that, this is going to come down. I believe we'll be fully successful in expediting hiring. This number will come down. Thank you.
Okay. There's nothing else on that. Wanted to talk a little bit about policy adjustments, whether there was interest from the board in taking a look at the reserve policies that we have. There currently is one specifically focused on the general reserve, because historically, there hadn't really been any reserves. And this policy is focused on bringing the general reserve level from basically nothing up to $10 million, which happened in '14-'15. So it still covers us moving forward. Just wanted to bring this up, whether there was interest from the board in revisiting that policy and potentially increasing the percentage of general fund appropriations that would be reserved. Of course, we have, we've talked about the pension gap reserve. The board has appropriated 3.65 million towards that. We don't have an official policy or target level, so that's something that could be considered. One other thing I wanted to bring up was the mental health audit reserve. Currently, there's $1 million in that reserve, as your board is well aware. We've had a number of audit exceptions over the years that have reduced revenue into mental health. We are anticipating an amount over $2 million that is supposed to be returned to the county from the state that we had previously paid as an audit exception or had revenue reduced. So it's basically, they said, no, you owe us 2.3 million. They take it from us, and now they say, oh, wait, you know, we didn't mean that, so you can have it back. But my thought is whether, you know, that's a significant amount. If not all of it is needed at the time, it would seem to make sense that maybe some of that recruitment amount would go into the audit reserve for a future, future time. We don't know what our next audit findings are going to be like, but there's certainly the possibility that we're going to have some issues there. So that's another thing that I wanted to bring to your attention.
So I got a question. Where else would that money go? Because if it's money for mental health services, it seems to me it would either go for services, or it would go into reserve for those services. So is there some third place where the money would go?
I think any number of mental health programs, but, you know, whether it goes in the reserve, or it's left in the fund balance, or goes to a new program, you know, I think that would be up to your board. I guess, talking about all the one-time funding thing, it's, wouldn't be our recommendation that it would, you know, go to a new program, because, you know, it is a recruitment of one-time money, and it's not an ongoing revenue stream. But, so, you know, that's the reason it makes me think that either we use it to cover an existing shortfall, which we've had some of them, or a large portion of it would go to the reserve for a future one-time expense.
Supervisor Hammer?
Yeah. That's really intriguing to me, that there could actually be this money that could be spent on a mental health program. And I'd like to know, like, what are the parameters under mental health? I mean, could it be spent on mental health housing? Could it be spent on a crisis residential treatment center? Could it be spent on a detox center? I mean, what could it be spent on? And also, is it common for counties to have a mental health audit reserve? I mean, do all counties have enough audit exceptions that they keep such a reserve?
I really don't.
I'm sure we're not the only county that has audit exceptions, but I don't know. I'd just be curious about that, because I'd never thought about that as being money that was actually available for mental health programs.
Answer it. You answer it.
When I came in 2007, we were having audit exceptions.
Yeah.
And so every year, I do believe in small rural counties, where you have some of the issues that we have, you will see that. Maybe not in some of the larger counties, but I think it's very common, yeah. And as far as this reserve, I don't really think we could speak for the department as far as how that reserve could be utilized. And honestly, until we get a little farther down the road, we know the money's there. We don't know if we're going to have another audit exception next year or the year after.
We don't, right, I know.
So keeping it there and knowing that if we need it, we have it, might be a good move.
And Alan, hasn't our general reserve gone up to 11?
It's actually at 11.5 now.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Woodhouse?
Thank you, Chair. I'll go out on a limb and say we're very likely to have audit exceptions every year from now till five years from now. So I don't like hearing that it might happen. That's why you and I have debated, and I don't understand it well enough. I call it a structural deficit built in, because we're always a million and a half short. But that's my misunderstanding of what that structural deficit means. But I think we're going to continue to have it based on what we've provided in the services and our poor billing and problems. That's why I'm pushing for quality assurance employees. And I don't know, you know, I don't think we can count on getting that money. When would you think we would ever get that $2 million? Because if we have another problem, they'd just take it out of that first, right? Is that how it works?
Well, Doug or Stacy, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that they have told us that we're owed the money, but that with the state appropriations process, a payment like this, over $1 million, has to be specifically appropriated in the state budget, and it would not be budgeted until next fiscal year. Is that correct?
So generally, if you're...
Well, and if there was a subsequent audit exception, that would be made up by not reimbursing us for payments that we had made that we would otherwise be reimbursed for. And I see Mr. Girk nodding his head.
We're not really able to spend that money. I would certainly support continuing some kind of general reserve commitment, larger than what we're doing now, even a preset portion of, 25% of what we get next year. But definitely building the general reserve more, because it isn't that robust. It would disappear quickly. It's great that we have it, though, speaking of the general reserve now.
Okay, so you're back. Just to clarify, Supervisor Woodhouse, you're back on the general reserve and not talking about mental health anymore. So you're saying that you would support continuing to increase the general reserve amount?
And I would not. Just doing a straw poll.
I think it's a good, it's a good debate to have. It's a good debate to have.
I mean, I think it's great that it's there. I don't want to lower it, but I don't want to increase it, even though I'm a bear.
I think we're winding down. Maybe we need to go forward. It's all of a sudden quiet.
Just briefly on the pension gap, because no one really said anything about that. Although the pension debt's really big, at this particular point in time, I'm really focused on how can we prevent the retirement account from accruing additional unfunded liability. And I, you know, one of the issues that we've, we're expecting some sort of report back is the exception for the 30-year loophole. And the numbers that we've been given is that that's $300,000, that that's adding each year to the unfunded liability, because it turns out the Retirement Association, for whatever reason, all these years, has never sent the county a bill for that $300,000, or whatever it is in any one year. And so that just adds the unfunded liability. And although the Retirement Association, and one of the reforms adopted when both Lloyd and John were on the board, was to reduce the payback to 18 years, I'm not sure at this point how quickly that $300,000 gets reported as new debt. And just to take a conservative estimate and say it takes them a year, and it may take more than a year, but if it takes them a year, that really gets paid back over 19 years. And at an assumed rate of return of seven and a quarter, that means that $300,000 actually becomes over $500,000 that gets paid back by the county over 19 years. And so that one little thing is adding, the way I look at it, $500,000 a year to the unfunded liability. So to me, the sooner we can act on that, the sooner we make some more progress on preventing the unfunded liability from going up, which is, in some ways, more important than building a pension gap reserve, because if the pension unfunded liability keeps going up, our little tiny pension gap reserve isn't going to make a difference.
And if I may, maybe some of these discussions would be a reason not to necessarily give solid direction on what we would do with the year-end... solid direction on what we would do with the year-end carryover, you know, we'll know more as things go forward in terms of what will it cost to provide some funding to fire, what are mental health transition costs going to be, the report back on the retirement system and some of the things that we could do, because it certainly, to me, arguably would make a lot more sense to pay the $300,000 upfront every year if, you know, if it would result in that long-term savings.
Better yet, the employee, those 19 employees pay it.
Well, yes, I don't disagree with that either. So, you know, I, I think we're having a lot of good discussion here, and there's a lot of ideas, but we'll be in a better position to give final direction as we gain more information. I don't disagree with the sentiment of applying significant funding to roads, as, as Chair Jordy points out, we, the board, a couple of years ago, decided, okay, let's start trying to make a little bit better in-road into the gap, realizing that we need seven or eight million every year, we're spending, you know, two. Now we're seeing the value of that erode, you know, it's, it would, it would be nice if we could at least maintain our level of effort there, and yet I think we also need to very seriously consider which roads ought to go back to gravel, because there are roads that, given the condition they're in, it's not a repaving, it's reconstruction, and it's going to arguably be more cost-effective to convert it back to gravel, maintain it as a gravel road for the next 20 years rather than pave it.
Or, or abandon it.
Or abandon it, and, you know, there might be some little segments here and there that really don't need to be in the county system as well. But I, I think that's the kind of decision we're going to have to start making, because it's pretty obvious we're not going to be able to put every road into, into acceptable condition, and for those that are, have already deteriorated to where they're in the reconstruction phase, it really becomes challenging. So maybe one place to target some of our dollars is those roads that haven't yet fallen into where they need to be reconstructed, but they're getting close, trying to, you know, restore those to acceptable condition. And, you know, we probably need to start prioritizing, this road is a fairly main thoroughfare versus this serves a cul-de-sac or, you know, or, or three ranches at the end of a road. Nobody likes to hear that discussion, but, you know, I think it's one we have to have to start prioritizing, how best do we use the limited road dollars we have?
Then we can get dust debatement from air quality, we'll get funds to.
Well, and, and, you know, for those.
Keep those roads up in the summertime.
For those that convert back to gravel, for those segments that dust suppression would make a lot of sense, either because it's protecting a nearby stream or sensitive receptors, we could probably still do that, and it's going to be cheaper than trying to keep everything paved.
And it will also, in some of those areas, slow down traffic, which is probably a good thing.
Okay, so, moving along.
Have we confused the issue enough?
I, yeah, absolutely.
But you're getting the idea, right?
Yes, yes. I had intended to go over the net county cost plan a little bit, I'm sure that all the board members are aware of how this works, I guess the main thing to point out on this is that, at this point, you know, with some of the, the revenue issues that we've discussed a number of times today, we're anticipating that net county cost assignments for next fiscal year will essentially be flat assignments, although we're working to factor in increases required to cover labor agreements that will go into effect next fiscal year. Are there any questions that any of the board members have about that? And I think we went over this a number of times, the last slide was just, you know, any additional ideas that the board may have related to the budget?
Well, this morning we talked a little bit about the possibility that there could be some potential expenditure reductions if the Human Resources Department, with, working with the CEO's office, can analyze, you know, where, where is the staff allocation throughout the system and throughout the county physically? And it could be that, you know, some people working in one office, because it's so short-staffed, is, potentially has substantially higher caseloads than people in another office, and it could be that, that the department that's overseeing this isn't going to speak up and say this is inequity because you'd be cutting positions in your own office. And, and so, anyway, but it seems like the outside eyes of Human Resources and the CEO's office could be helpful in that, and, and maybe establishing some standard throughout the county, and so maybe the, the result is, you know, maybe one office goes from three to five or six, and the other office goes from 22 to 14 or 16, you know? And, but you may have a net savings overall of one or two positions countywide.
Or maybe one stays at three and the other one goes to 14, because we found out the reason why the one was so much more efficient.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair Jordy, I speak to Alan here, I think that, that what you're talking about should really be a separate workshop, because we're talking about standards, employee standards, workload, and I think it's, I think it would really do us all good to hear, because there are certain departments that have standards, and Health and Human Services, I believe, has some state requirements as far as how, what their caseloads are. So I, I would welcome if this board would choose that we could have a workshop, say a two-hour workshop, with Human Resources and maybe specifically HHSA, and look at our, our regional employees, regional efforts, what the standards are for our frontline workers. So we can do that at some point, probably sometime before July, if that would work for this board. Because I think it's a much bigger discussion than just the budget discussion, when you're talking about moving employees around.
Okay, Supervisor Brown.
Actually, Supervisor Woodhouse first.
I'll be brief. I did want to say, I understand, and we should all be aware, if when you look at a potential idea of where would we cut back if we had to cut 10 million or 15 million out, that you're threatening people's jobs and making them feel vulnerable, so that's not my intent. And I don't know how you have that open discussion and still get to something meaningful, so maybe I'm giving you an impossible task.
Well, the easy answer is if we're 10 or 15 million dollars out, there really isn't any places, I mean, you can't find that kind of savings in the budget without cutting staff positions. It's just a huge portion of the, the county budget.
What that number is where you do have to get into staff, a few million we can do, and I'd just like to know the fallbacks, we're not building up something that we're later going to have to cut inadvertently because it's connected to something else, so I'll try to get more clear on some options to give you an idea.
Mr. Chair, the capital improvement plan, all of those projects, that's an idea, and, and we, we were at a point where we had no major projects, and that was for a few years, and I think our CIP is only a couple of years old now, so when you talk about where can you save two or three million without cutting your staff and reducing wages, it would be on projects like that. And as, as we all know, our roofs are in such bad shape from deferred maintenance over the last couple of years, so.
Not a couple, ten.
The, yeah, so I just, I just bring that up.
ADA.
I think that, I guess I, I'm having PTSD, because we did this, we did this before, and, you know, it was everything from layoffs to wage reductions to no projects, to, you know, roof leaks, to everything, and to, in some ways, you know, our services shrunk. And so what we're really trying to do with the direction of this board is improve and increase those services. So it's difficult to say where we would cut, that isn't something that's necessary today, so, thank you.
And in a way, you do know where the cuts would be, looking back at what we did before, just, it may be an illogical place to put more money into roofs, and you're thinking, well, why push it up? But if that would be a vulnerable place, then maybe that's where some of this revenue needs to go. It's not all logical, it's defensive thinking. Thank you.
Supervisor Brown.
Thank you. And I also think Supervisor Woodhouse, investing in the infrastructure, has a lot to do with staff morale as well, when you stop and think about it in conditions that aren't so good for some people to work in. So to me, that kind of goes together. Targeted investments and community priorities, I think we've gone over there, those, and our roads, if, if, community priority, our roads, our roads, our roads. And Supervisor McCowen and I, and it's very close to Supervisor Hamburg's district as well, there are some, what you would call urban streets that the county should maintain that are in horrible shape, too. It's just, it's not the really rural areas. So we just need to, to really look at that, I believe it's, it's horrifying to think if we lose that type of infrastructure for transportation. And we are looking at maybe a tax, a toll, or whatever they're going to call it, on how many miles you travel around, and to me, that is so unfair for rural communities, because we don't have access to the transit and what have you. But anyway, that's, to me, that's a community priority.
Well, I don't disagree, and I also want to go back to our earlier discussion about the county really needs to be doing everything we reasonably can to promote economic development, and broadband is a part of that, that would be huge for Mendocino County, any progress we're able to make there, whatever we can do to assist the development of new housing, which I think is becoming increasingly apparent, that's a critical need in the community, and it also does tie into economic development.
And homelessness.
And also the thought of whether we contract for it or have it on staff, increased grant writing capability, I think, would be very important. And then, another thing I'd like to return to is the issue of shifting salary expense from Series 1,000 salaries to Series 5,000 transfers and reimbursements, because I, I do think it's a big step away from transparency, and the board has given direction previously that in the budget, we would like to see an accounting of all the transfers in, all the transfers out. And, you know, based on this accounting change, it looks like we're dramatically increasing transfers in and transfers out, but again, there, there ought to be someplace in the budget where they're all explained, and I would think each budget unit, if it, if there's not room in the line item to show it, I would show it by an asterisk on the page for that budget unit, and then again, I'd like to see the compilation, and we've discussed this and agreed to it previously, to include in the budget a schedule that would show all the transfers in, all the transfers out, and I believe we were told that could be done.
Yeah, the transfers are already included at a, I guess, just a budget unit level, and I'm not sure what schedule number that is, but it's not currently broken down by what the total transfer amount is for, and exactly what the dollar, you know, there may be a budget unit that has five different transfers, it's just shown in the aggregate currently.
Well, and it, so for each budget unit, it could at least have the breakdown, as they often do, for what are the specific items covered by that transfer? I mean, it, to me, it ought to be someplace in a way that it's readily accessible to us and to the public. And particularly, I would, I think I would like to see the salary transfers broken out, because I think I'm being told that when we're accounting for them in Series 5,000, then it's not really showing in the budget as salary, per se. Is that accurate?
Well, it's, it's shown as an, as an expenditure in the 1,000 series, but it's being reimbursed from another budget unit through transfers in and out.
Which kind of seems like smoke and mirrors in a way.
Well, it's either that, or you, you just increase the net county cost of, you know, that budget unit to cover that, because it's not being transferred in from another area.
Well, if you increase the net county cost of one department, though, there'd be a commensurate decrease in another one, wouldn't there? We're talking about the same amount of money, it's just which account is it shown in, and Series 5,000 apparently is being used as a vehicle to show it in a different account or budget unit.
Well, I mean, maybe we should have a whole workshop on this, but to have the entire costs of a particular employee in one budget unit, but perhaps it's being shared, for example, the CEO has a number of breakdowns, but we could use the water agency as an example, percentage of her time is reimbursed from the water agency. So you could have a specific percentage of the CEO's salary actually paid directly out of those budget units, but the way we like to do it is to have the full cost of the salary in the executive office budget unit, and then the other, you know, the water agency clerk of the board budget unit is transferred in through the 5,000 series to cover the percentage of the cost that goes for providing the service related to that other budget unit.
Well, we can, short of the workshop, we can pause there. I'll make a motion to direct staff to proceed with budget preparation based on today's presentation.
Is there a second?
It could be that simple.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Supervisor Brown?
Yes, I was waiting, just to make one more recommendation, and new revenue streams, we had one of the individuals that spoke, representing fire departments, talked about 2% property tax increases, that we've been really, really low in those increases. I know in my previous profession, when I did property management, but I also did budgets, and every year I just add 2%, 2%. I'd just like it looked into, I'm sure Sue's doing her job, our assessor, and, and I'm not sure how you look at that, and I think she has come before us before, especially with the downturn in the economy, as to why, you know, you wouldn't be doing the 2%. It was much less of a property increase, if any, so I'm sure there's ways that it's determined, but someone felt like we needed to look back at that, so I, when, when I saw the new revenue streams, I went, okay, maybe that's something we ought to ask.
Okay, so you're, you're asking for information on the actual increases in assessments?
Yes.
Okay.
Supervisor McCowen?
With the concurrence of the second, I would amend the motion slightly to say, based on today's presentation and discussion.
Yes, of course.
Okay, let's vote by the button.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes our work for the day.
Good job, Dan.
Let us have four fires.
Okay. 4:54, we'll adjourn and meet back here at 9 o'clock tomorrow morning.